Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call the meeting to order of the Merrimack Planning Board for September 1st. Let me remind everyone who will speak to make sure the microphones are turned on to sign in and speak clearly so the folks at home can hear you. Let me appoint Nelson and Jeff to voting positions tonight to fill for Lynn and for the vacant full-member position. And with that, item two on our agenda is a planning and zoning administrator's report. Gillian, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing at this time.
Any questions by members of the board for staff?
No.
Seeing none, that brings us to item three on our agenda, which is John J. Flatley Company is the applicant and owner. This is a review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan to construct 240 multifamily residences, clubhouse, and associated parking and drainage improvements per the requirements of the Flatley Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcels are located at 645-673-685-703 and 707 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation, and Wellhead Protection Districts, Tax Map 6E Lot 3-1, 33, 34, 35, 36. The item is continued from the June 16th, July 21, and August 18th Planning Board meetings. And before Gillian gets an opportunity to offer some comments, I will recuse myself from this item. I'm gonna go over there and turn it over to our secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, good evening. Gillian, is there anything to say before we start moving?
The applicant's here to discuss Phase One of the Mixed Use Development Conditional Use Permit that was recently finalized, site plans for the multifamily residences, and the applicant would like some initial comments and feedback on the plan that has been submitted.
But as I understand it, that plan does not reflect a lot of things that have been talked about, like the traffic study, any comments you may have had from CLD, which I know you had a meeting yesterday, I think. Am I right?
Yeah, we have those initial items, but there may be some revisions needed.
Other than...
Yeah.
Okay. As Lynn has now joined us, I shall toss the coin, but not bother, because either Nelson or Jeff would normally have to stand down, because as Bob's standing over there out of, you're still both voting members for the time being. All right, just administratively. Gentlemen, off we go.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Lake Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, and with me this evening is Kevin Walker from the John J. Flatley Company. We are before you this evening, as you said, to discuss a multifamily development, 240-unit multifamily development, to be specific, with associated site improvements. As you may recall, we went through the conditional use permit with this property last year, and over the course of the last few weeks, we finalized that permit with the town staff, and I believe it may have been approved this evening.
Yeah, you are right. Both Bob and I have signed it just before the meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The proposed multifamily residential development that we have before you this evening is situated on Tax Map Parcel 6E 3-1. This parcel consists of approximately 73.65 acres and is situated on the east side of Daniel Webster Highway, approximately 800 feet north of the intersection of Hilton Drive. The property is zoned industrial I-1 and is also encompassed by the Aquifer Conservation District, as well as the Wellhead Protection District, as it's in the Merrimack Village District, Wellhead Protection for Wells IV and V. The proposal for this development is to construct 548-unit, four-story garden-style apartments along with one clubhouse, a pool, two tennis courts, and a playground facility. Each apartment building will also have a 10-stall garage along with associated parking and sidewalks. The site improvements for this project will include the construction of an access road, parking areas, walkways, landscaping, lighting, and drainage, and utility infrastructure. The layout of the site provides for a nice buffer between the buildings, provides adequate buffering to the perimeter properties, and each building will have access to usable green space area along its perimeter, which was a suggestion that many of the board members made during the CUP process. The circulation onsite is essentially the same as it was presented during the CUP process, with the exception of the easternlymost section of the site, where we did make some improvements to the access and parking while grading out the site, and that area is located right here. I could pull out the CUP plan, but essentially, there was no parking along this stretch here. We didn't feel at the time that we'd build a grade this in, but through the engineering process, we were able to determine and grade that in appropriately, so we've made some improvements to the layout in that general location. The site circulation does provide for an internal loop as well, which was requested by the fire department during the preliminary review, as well as the CUP reviews. The local parking regulations require 583 spaces for the residential portion and 10 spaces for the clubhouse, for a total of 593 spaces. The site design that we have before you includes, or provides, 620 spaces. Fifty of those spaces consist of the 10, each 10-stall garage that's provided for each building, and 47 future spaces, which will be designed and permitted as part of this project, which is, again, something we had reviewed during the CUP process. The total number of constructed spaces will therefore be 573, of which 17 are going to be handicap accessible spaces. The site design also incorporates pedestrian access through walkways and sidewalks, as well as a proposed trail along the perimeter of the site. These elements were also reviewed in some length during the CUP process, as pedestrian connectivity was certainly of interest to the board members, as well as to my client. The project will be serviced by municipal sewer and water and natural gas, and we have been working with the Merrimack Village District and the Public Works Department on both associated designs. As part of this project, there will be some off-site improvements, which I believe you were mentioning, Mr. Chairman. Those improvements will consist of off-site traffic improvements, as far as lane configurations, and the extension and improvement to the municipal water system as well. We are working on both of those designs and approvals through the Merrimack Village District and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. The drainage for the project will be collected in a series of stormwater conveyance swales, as well as closed drainage systems, and conveyed to four stormwater management areas where qualitative and quantitative mitigation and treatment will occur. These four stormwater management areas consist of two rain gardens and two infiltration basins. The stormwater design has been designed to meet all local and state standards. The development of the site will require a special exception through the zoning board of adjustments, as we are encroaching within one, we are encroaching in one area into the wetland buffer in order to provide access and stormwater mitigation. And I can show you the location where we're getting into the buffer area is right here. It's not a large impact, but it is kind of a pinch point on the property, so we will be seeking approvals through the zoning board for that. To date, we have met with the Conservation Commission and the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee, and we have made revisions to the plans to address many of the comments that we've received from both of those meetings. We have also met with the town staff to review the CLD review letter dated July 16, 2015, and we have made substantial revisions to the plans to address the engineering review comments. And we have not submitted many of these revisions, as we wanted to come before the board and certainly entertain any feedback that you may have at this time, so we can hopefully incorporate those into the next submission, the resubmission. So after receiving some feedback from the board this evening, we certainly intend on pulling everything together, if you will, addressing, we have made a majority of the revisions, you know, to accommodate the CLD's report, and be happy to answer any questions that the board may have relative to any comments that CLD has on the project. Also be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have relative to the plans that we currently have before you this evening. As I stated, we are looking to file with the zoning board of adjustment. We were reluctant to do so without first coming before this board in the event that something does change, or a request is made to change some kind of configuration that's locust to that proposed impact. So that's, you know, certainly something we'd like to get out of this evening's meeting, is that the layout is, it is significantly and essentially the same, if not the same, very similar to the design that we presented during the CUP. We are not requesting any waivers with this application. It's our understanding with meeting with staff that a parking waiver is not necessary, as we will satisfy the parking requirements with the future spaces that will be designed and permitted with this project. So that really wraps up a brief presentation of the project. I'd be happy to go into any details or try to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
The one thing I would just pick up from what you said, you mentioned five units, but I think we agreed that you're only going to be able to put four up before there is some evidence of commercial or in the industrial or commercial part of the project. Am I not right?
There is, and certainly staff has recommended stipulating the phasing more clearly on the plan, and that will be done as part of this resubmission.
But as I think we understood, is that you were only going to do four to start with, and therefore, you were gonna, the Phase One would be the four units, and then we would go on with further phases, which incorporated the fifth unit and other aspects of the CUP site.
Yeah, the, the goal for us would be to go through the review and approval of five units, with the understanding that the fifth unit will not be constructed, but certainly the design for that fifth unit and all of the associated improvements and everything will have already been reviewed and approved, hopefully, through this process.
Okay. Well, before we go any further, I think we should ask any of the members of the board to, what questions they've got to help the applicant in his deliberations, which is obviously what he's seeking from us today. Mr. Disco, please start.
Okay, I'll start off. You point out the first thing that jumps out is, what is, what are we being asked to approve tonight, and where is the phasing line? And I need to see that on here to know what we're, what we're being asked to do. The second thing is, I have not seen the CLD comments, which are being referred to, and you wanted to know if we had any suggestions regarding the CLD comments and their response, and I haven't seen the CLD comments, and I don't know that they've been distributed to the board, and...
They have not yet. This was supposed to be just for initial comments, and that there are going to be revisions submitted, so we didn't submit those to the board at this time, but we can do that with the resubmission.
Well, I would like to see them before I made any decisions on this, just to see what other things are of concern. Also, there was traffic, must be some kind of traffic analysis that goes with this, is that right? And do we have a traffic study that's been done?
We do, similar to the CLD comments. It can be distributed with the resubmission.
Okay, well, I would expect to see that before I was asked to vote on this.
Could I interrupt Nelson? Of course, the one thing, which I do actually have had the privilege of seeing, the summary of the traffic analysis, which, if you will pardon me, I'll explain, is that the traffic consultant is proposing turning lanes, going in both directions to get into the site. Of course, we must all of us remember sadly that this road is not under our jurisdiction, but it's a jurisdiction of New Hampshire DOT. So certainly before we know, I would like to know what DOT is actually going to insist on. The word "traffic signal" is hovering in my brain with horror, but I certainly think it's important we do need to see that before we can finally give any going forward.
Yeah.
Please go on, Nelson.
Fiscal impact analysis was supposed to be part of the CUP, and I guess, was that done, and...
It is part of the CUP, and it does feature in the CUP thing, which Bob and I have signed tonight.
Okay, I think I would like to see that as well.
Fair comment.
Yeah. So those are my comments. I'm short of information, basically. Thank you.
Okay. Please go, yes, Mike, please.
Go in order?
Go in order, come around towards us.
I had the same comments about the CLD comments and the traffic study. I wasn't aware of the economic study, but that would be interesting to me as well. And then the MVD comments, too, would be interesting. We've had a lot of talk about sites in the aquifer protection zones. I think it'd be great to see where they're at with their process and their protection initiatives. There is some discussion here on note number 22 about deicing chemicals. Does that reflect anything that you've had discussions with them on, where it talks about deicing chemicals not being used except during extreme events? Is that something that you've discussed with them, and have they agreed to that condition?
We have met with Merrimack Village District and Underwood Engineering, who is their representative, I guess, if you will, and certainly some of the notes that you are seeing on the plan is a reflection of our meetings with them. We do understand that they will certainly be reviewing the off-site water improvement section of the regulation, but we did have a meeting with staff prior to initiating the process, where we ultimately met and had a dialogue about CLD is reviewing the drainage components, and Merrimack Village District will therefore, and Underwood will therefore not be reviewing the drainage components, because it's a very similar, it'd be redundant reviews.
Okay.
So ultimately, CLD's comments do address the regulations. We are meeting all of the regulations with our design, in that we are recharging, I mean, the rain gardens and infiltration basins obviously are promoting recharge onsite. We're meeting all of the stormwater models for all the stormwater frequency events that were required to analyze. I can speak, and I didn't realize that the board did not have the CLD comments. Obviously, I understand it's difficult to have an open dialogue regarding the project. You know, with that said, but I can speak to the, we've made all the revisions to CLD's comments with the, we did meet with staff earlier today. We had some questions, mainly because some of their review pertained to the CUP process. We wanted to make sure that that wasn't applicable, since obviously we had already gone through and addressed all those points within the zoning. But when it comes to drainage, erosion control, they did have some comments pertaining to some of the studies, the fiscal impact and the traffic study that we submitted. We have addressed in many of their comments, at least from my opinion, were minor technical comments, just, you know, little things like we use the NRCS KSAT values, and they wanted to see conversions and how we came about those rates, but there was no substantive changes to the design necessarily, because it does meet the regulations, but certainly a pretty thorough review. Once you see it, it'll look like there was a lot, but we have spent some time in, you know, conversing with them and addressing that. So I think with confidence, we can certainly speak to how we are adhering to the requirements that, you know, for projects that are within the Aquifer Protection District, as well as within the Wellhead Protection Districts. And the one thing that we did agree to share with Tom Page, who's the engineer from Underwood Engineering, is sharing CLD's comments, so that they are, I guess you could say, assured that those aspects of the local regulations are being reviewed and commented on accordingly.
Yeah, as you may or may not know, the history of applicants that have come before us in the Aquifer Protection District have been very contentious at times. We've had certain feedback from the Village District on what they would prefer as best management practices in that district, and we've supported them in some cases to that regard, to the point where I think we have kind of a standard requirement that we're starting to encourage, excuse me, applicants to consider the no-deicing chemicals, and certainly there are some sites in the area that currently practice that way. I like the practicalness that you propose here, because I think that one of the issues that the applicant, the existing sites that are dealing with that are facing is where you have a condition that it's almost impossible to manage extreme conditions with overplowing, brooming, and sand application, and you still have an icing, you know, condition. It's just a matter of working out some language to make sure that, one, it's, you know, acceptable to all, and that it is also measurable, in the event that staff could go out and make sure that, you know, you're maintaining what your obligations you're willing to meet to protect the aquifer. I had a couple other questions, if I can keep going.
Please go.
You talked a little bit about the drainage study, which I'm always very interested in. We talked about it in the preliminary CIP, that you were going to try to find LID practices or infiltrating practices, and it looks like you're incorporating that with the infiltration basins and some rain gardens. What perspective onsite have you taken to try to address some of that? And I guess specifically, my thoughts would be going, if you have these large infiltration basins that are kind of outside the normal activity area, almost kind of nestled away, the out-of-sight, out-of-mind condition starts to fall into play there for me, and whether or not there are other things that you're doing onsite that are controlling sediment in the case of snow management, and the blinding over of those structures, and just other debris from getting in there, and, you know, if we're not able to view inside on a drive-by, are the maintenance folks really going to maintain it? You know, what sort of operation practices might you have to really ensure that, you know, those are going to maintain their capacities?
Right. Certainly, there would be a stormwater management maintenance schedule that would be part of the alteration of terrain permit through this, that we would work with through the state. But I guess just to speak to the design of the site, when we first started with the design, we thought we would have a lot more area internal within the green space areas between the parking to do more low-impact development, honestly. And when we went and graded out the site, you know, for most people that drive by the site and you take a look at it, and even for me, at least initially, everything seemed relatively flat, but when you start to design parking lots at a maximum grade, what we found is we had to absorb some elevation in some of those green space areas, which limited our ability to do, you know, more low-impact development than, you know, what we initially anticipated anyways. We were expecting we might be able to do a little bit more. So what we've done to try to offset that, we did, we have incorporated rain gardens and LIDs like that where we could, and then we've done some grass swales within the parking area. I mean, the design objective is always to try to limit the closed drainage system, because I think with an open drainage system, you're really playing to the LID element. You get a lot of filtering through the vegetation, some infiltration, whether you're modeling it or not, it's going to occur anyways, and, but in areas where we have had to implement the closed drainage system, we're going with some deep sump catch basins to try to capture some of that sediment. So you capture it along the stretch, and then obviously you have a four-bay system before the infiltration basin, so you keep, try to keep the area of the basin that's primarily functioning for infiltration clean, and make sure that no sediments get in there. And ultimately, what that does is it ensures for, you know, that there will be a long-term function of that structure, even in the instance where, you know, there maybe isn't as much maintenance as you would like, and those are elements that we try to over-design, you know, the size of the four-bay areas and stuff like that. But ultimately, there will be a stormwater management plan, recommended, you know, maintenance practices that will be part of the alteration of terrain package, which is something that CLD actually requested in their review, is to see all of that information, the state worksheets on the BMPs, because when we made the initial submission, the, a couple of the worksheets were missing, and I believe the final stormwater management plan, as far as from a maintenance end, was not included in there. So hopefully, when you have an opportunity to review those documents, you'll, you know, we will have addressed your concerns, but certainly that is something that we do focus on when we design a site in a project.
Yeah, the only pollutants that I would be, I guess, concerned about would be floatables and oils and grease, and to the degree that you could incorporate some sort of snout in some of the, maybe, you know, key catch basins that are larger, and they are catching a couple, or be kind of collector basins, just so that, you know, we're going to have drips and that sort of stuff over time. I always, I like, if people can see it in the basin, then hopefully someone calls Kevin and his group and says, hey, we've got, you know, stuff in the basement, in the basin, rather than some sort of interval that may get missed, because it's kind of in the back 40, and I think it's just a better practice that way. So that would be a suggestion from me. You mentioned something about using published KSAT values, but, so you didn't do infield verification for infiltration rates for the soils, is that correct?
We did not. We did do a significant amount of test pits on the property, and we know that the soils, in our opinion, are, we're going to find results that are probably better than the KSAT result, or, excuse me, the NRCS results. And we have the equipment to do those studies. On sites that have very good soils, a lot of times, we will not go forward with that exercise, because what we find is that there's no, there's no net gain, you know, from the time that we've spent necessarily going through that exercise. When we fully expect that the infiltration rates will exceed the NRCS rates, not to mention that it sounds like you're quite familiar with those standards, the alteration of terrain regulations require us to apply a factor of safety of two, so normally what happens is the field rates end out being much higher than you apply the factor of safeties, and you're normally, probably, in this scenario, still going to be better, but it's, you know, we have the space to over-design, and it's kind of part of the over-design, so we just use the NRCS data for that.
Okay. My concern would be the other side. Is it too fast, and is the depth of groundwater close enough that, again, with oil greases, that sort of thing, things that'll become more dissolved in the water column for the stormwater, could that be a potential issue, you know, that Village District could be interested in? So I don't know if you have any information with regards to your test pits, and if you saw water?
We do have the test pit data. I believe that was submitted and included in the stormwater management report.
Okay. You know, recall off the top of your head, how deep the groundwater table is, do you?
I know that it varied throughout the site, but in the areas that we're doing infiltration, I believe that we may not have even hit groundwater, but I would like to look at that. I don't want to state that that is the case in both those areas. I think they're actually called out on the plan. I may be able to find them for you, if you'd like, real quick.
Okay, sure, if you want to take a look. And I can ask Kevin a question while he looks. He mentioned something in regard of the O&amp;M manual with regards to those BMPs. It's part of the state application. You guys have obviously submitted similar applications on other sites. The Nashua one is an example that I think of right off the top of my head. What do you guys do as far as your operational management to, you know, hold up that end of the bargain and make sure that, you know, those systems are maintained and certainly are meeting the need?
Every site has a property manager. This won't be any different. And also have a maintenance crew, just as our Nashua property does, as well as other properties that John Flatley has. And if it can't be done by our onsite people, it's subbed out, and everything is maintained per the operation and maintenance plan.
Do you guys keep records of those intervals when you do those?
Typically, yes.
Typically, okay, great.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
Just to speak to that, Mr. Redding.
Yeah, okay.
The test pit data, in the vicinity of the infiltration basin, to the back of the property, if you will, this area here, we did not...
if you will, this area here, we did not hit seasonal and we dug test pits to 160 inches, all within the footprint of that, and we didn't hit any ledge or anything. So that's over 12 feet, you know, 13, 14 feet that we dug to an elevation. But we can, I, we can certainly, I, I'll sit down with our soil scientists and we'll talk about the, you know, the detailed test pit logs and, and make sure that, you know, that there's, we're not going to be on the other side of the spectrum because that is something that alteration of terrain does monitor as well. If your infiltration rate is too fast, then you may, they make you engineer the, the bottom of the infiltration basins to make sure that treatment is occurring prior to, you know, the stormwater reaching the, the groundwater. And just to speak to the other basin, it appears as though the test pits, there was three test pits for this infiltration basin here. And those depths range from 150 inches to 160 inches. And we did not observe any seasonal high-water table or ledge refusal in those locations either. And, you know, in this area of the site here, we were finding, you know, seasonal at around 48 inches. Obviously, there's, you know, wetland area nearby and what we did find in, in other areas of the site, I think over in this location here, we found that, you know, portions of the site had been filled, so there was obviously, you know, not desirable material in those locations. So then that all plays into, you know, we do have to do infiltration reports for the alteration of terrain permit, basically explaining why we've located our treatment practices in the, in the areas shown on the plan and, and making sure that we're not just placing homes and then having all those other elements happen as secondary, but yet placing them in areas that are conducive and will be successful in, in meeting all of their standards, so.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of having a high infiltration rate, you know, for, for various reasons. One, obviously, as we, as storms change and more intense rates come up, that just allows you more capacity. Two, you know, it just gets more water in the ground, which is what Village District wants. And again, going back to just thinking about, you know, the oils and greases and floatables, you know, if, if there's strategic use of those snouts or other devices similar, I think that that probably gets us a good belts and suspenders designed to allow for that high infiltration rate without any major impacts. And obviously, being far enough away from the groundwater helps too. The two other questions, if, if that's all right?
You're doing so well.
All right. So you talked about some of the limited practices in between the buildings and the parking space. Obviously, the, the set doesn't have the landscaping plan, I don't believe. Are you planning to do something more than just grassed areas between that? You know, what is, you know, I'm not looking for detail, but at this point, just kind of a general impression of what you're looking to do to try to incorporate some trees and other vegetation in that area?
Yeah, and I think for those of you that have had the opportunity to visit some of Mr. Flatley's other projects, one of the things that he certainly does well is, is landscape and I think that's, you, you mentioned the Nashville project, that's a project that's real representative of, of, you know, how, how he likes to, to have his projects look. There will be, and there, there actually is a detailed landscape design. Unfortunately, when the submission deadline came, we, we received the lighting plan and the landscaping plan the next day and staff recommended that we not resubmit at that time, not because they didn't want the material, but because it, it technically wouldn't meet the deadline, so we didn't want to be bumped off to the, to the next meeting. So we do have that material. We look forward to certainly sharing it with our next submission.
That's great.
And, and just to speak to the snouts, that is, I would be surprised if that's not on this plan set because we always, we typically do, you know, propose those at the, at the very least at the last manhole or catch basin prior to something discharging into one of the stormwater management areas, certainly out of the closed drainage system designs. But we will, I will take a look at it from the, from the maintenance side and if it makes sense to move it closer to the parking area so that it's easily accessible and somebody doesn't have to drive down the, the access. And I do, did just want to mention that we, we are providing suitable access for maintenance to, to all of these areas.
Excellent, great. I have one more. You talked about the variance that you're going to meet with zoning on regarding the wetland buffer impact. Did you have a plan or, I guess, in what, what regard can you provide some information to that and, you know, is there mitigation that you're proposing as an offset to that impact? You know, obviously, any chance that you can make that buffer more robust as an offset certainly appeals to me, but I'm just curious as to what your strategy is to try to provide justification for the variance?
The, I believe it's a special exception.
Oh, sorry.
So it's a permitted use by right within the, the buffer, so hopefully the task of proving hardship will not be, will not be there. But in, in any event, I think that the design of the site has really been, the intent is for it to be self-contained in that all the improvements really drain internally. And part of that design is what is resulting in some of the impact. And so I think it's, the impacts are required in order for us to put a responsible design together and capture all the improvement, improved areas. And what I mean by that is this wetland here really is a finger that comes through the site and it, you know, the stormwater kind of pools here. In, in very large storm events, I believe it, it will bleed out over land and ultimately make it into the, into the brook there, dumpling brook. What we're proposing to do is any, you know, we're capturing any of the improved areas and routing them into this infiltration basin here. The other thing that we're proposing to do is there's a rain garden located here, so we're going to treat any of the areas coming off the tennis court and even off of the developments offsite to try to help mitigate, you know, some of the impacts to, to, to that wetland, I guess, if you will. But what we're doing is that we're installing a covert here and ultimately outfalling it over in this location here, so it's going to run under the site and outfall over here. And we're not contributing any runoff into that center wetland, but what we're doing is providing an avenue for that wetland to still over, over top during larger storm events. So the installation of that covert is partially due, results in that impact. The other impact is, has to do with the access road for the, the, you know, the loop road system here. And what we've found is that there's a number of easements that go through the site, so we have a sewer easement that comes through the site here, which really limits our ability to move, you know, some of the building placement and parking layout on the property. And, and ultimately, this becomes a pinch point. So I think we can prove, you know, through all of those points that, that it is necessary to, you know, impact the buffer. And we're not impacting it substantially. I do not have the calculation to, to tell you the exact square footage, but the plan shows a 40-foot setback, which is a building setback to the wetland. The buffer is 25 feet, so it's, if you're looking at that, that, depending on what plan you're looking at, it's probably showing the 40 feet, so it looks like more of an encroachment than, than what it likely is.
That, that sounds very reasonable to me. And then the only thing I would follow up with that is just that, we talked about, I think, as far as the master planning goes, just some of the, kind of the connectivity and some of the, kind of preservation of some of the existing site features. You know, with the playground being close to the wetland, I don't know if that wetland really has any value, but it would be a neat opportunity potentially to, you know, to connect, you know, kind of a, a learning opportunity with the kids in the wetland, you know, even if it's just a viewing spot for them to see, you know, with, you know, whatever, birdhouses or something and just be able to view nature. I think that's an excellent opportunity there and obviously along your trail system. So that's just a, just a comment and not necessarily need to respond to that unless you feel you need to. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
You've taken most of the questions, I'm, don't worry about it. I'm sure you put them better than I.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Just, I will touch on the, the pedestrian element of the, the playground area. If you recall, one, the pedestrian trail that we had actually, you know, goes around the, the project here and it went around here and we, we at one time had it going across this wetland finger right there, thinking that we could maybe do some form of a pedestrian bridge or something at that location, which Mr. Flatley has done at many of his sites. It's kind of, it's an, it offers a nice option for people to kind of, you know, get out of the development and, and explore some wildlife and nature. When we met with the Conservation Commission, they asked us to eliminate that from the plan. So what we've done is we've actually taken that pedestrian trail and we've run it unfortunately parallel to the parking area here and parallel to the access through there, which ultimately resulted in more buffer impacts at that particular location. But, so just wanted to make mention of that because I, I think the direction that you're going and I'm sure we'll talk about and see if we can incorporate something with the, the playground area. But I think that's certainly an interest that Mr. Flatley has on, you know, most of his projects as well as to try to get people away from, you know, their home and, and into the, the land that surrounds it. Those type of amenities typically attract people and, I mean, I can speak to the Nashville project where there was a lot of improvements that were done that were not part of the original approval of the project, whether it's biking trails, pedestrian trails. And I think it, I think ultimately, that's the reason why he couldn't build them fast enough. I mean, every single one of those units leased and had a waiting list, so we're hoping and I'm sure he's hoping that they'll have the same success here for those same reasons.
On that subject, could you just enlighten us why the Conservation Commission didn't like the, I liked, I mean, the idea of that bridge, I was getting quite excited and then you even sort of nailed it down. And I obviously, maybe I shouldn't ask you that, or maybe the staff could tell me, why the Conservation Commission didn't like the bridge?
I don't have that answer. Maybe Chad does.
I, I think it was merely impacts to the jurisdictional wetlands. It was, it was just an easy answer because it resulted in less impacts, although, I mean, part of the thing that's difficult to get across to boards and commissions sometimes is many of the wetlands that we find in New Hampshire, certainly forested wetlands are dry and, and certainly passable by foot most of the year. And, and just because you're calling in a pedestrian trail doesn't necessarily mean that through that section you have to do any improvements. It's just a matter of flagging, you know, a potential location. The bridge element is just something that I think it, it, it's a nice feature that, that people, it draws people, you know, to it sometimes. And, you know, maybe it's something that can be revisited, but at this stage, it was, we were asked to take it off the plan.
That, that'll, that'll be something for us to deal with then.
All right. Yeah, I would agree wholeheartedly. I don't know the reason for the impact, the reason for their opinion, however, I think that we shouldn't be afraid to access or at least provide access to wetlands. You know, we're not going to protect them by, by chaining them up. Putting a fence around a wetland doesn't, even if the, if the, whatever, the animals can pass the fence, it doesn't, I don't necessarily support the, the elements that I think we all want, which is, we should be aware of it, we should value it. And, you know, with the playground right there, what a great opportunity for a kid to find a frog and make a pet and, you know, I mean, that changed me, you know? I mean, I am who I am today because of the, the interaction I had with the forest in my backyard, so.
I will, I will take it upon myself to get in touch with Mr. Ten Hag and find out why the commission didn't like it. Jeff, have you?
Yep, oh, yes. Public Works had recommended that you put a road in from your project into Allen, Allen Road. Have you given any thought on how you do that? In fact, they said either a full standard road or emergency access road.
Yeah, we, we actually spoke with Public Works about that and it's my understanding that that request has, has been lifted.
Good, actually, good. Very good.
Public, the, the review from Public Works, and this is mainly from wastewater, I believe.
Yeah.
I think the wastewater department has an agenda of, of, of getting roads everywhere they can, you know, for maintenance purposes because we've, we're actively in a dialogue with them about, they want us to construct a 20-foot road from the end of our parking all the way down to, basically to the railroad. And that's not something we really want to do for a number of reasons. We don't want to attract people through our site to the back of the property, for one. And when I speak to this, I'm obvious, it's not my site, but my client's site. And the, the other reason is we're trying our dearest to stay 250 feet from the river so we don't have to file for another permit. So we did, we did discuss that with staff today and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, resolve that.
Nail it.
Okay. Next question. We talked a lot about the buffering area between the residence and your, and your project. If, standing in the, standing in any of those residence backyard, what do they see when they look towards, that's what I hope I, I get back. I'll play answer, I'm hoping they'll give us.
It's mature, mature woods in those areas and I, I think, you know, part of the benefit, obviously, of, of taking what we believe is a, a large number of parking spaces that are not going to be needed and locating them in that area is that we can ultimately provide the largest buffer possible to the adjacent residential areas. And I want to see all these comments, which was a good one, pertain to that particular area in that, you know, we've designed it for the future spaces, but what is it going to look like if those aren't built? And so we've ultimately done a design that shows just the improvements around the building and I think a, an open swale that, that conveys any stormwater back around to the front of the buildings to our, our stormwater system. But the buffer to the property line in that location, I believe is in excess of 70 feet in its mature woods, but I can give you the accurate.
How about where the wetlands are? Do you still have the same level of trees in the wetlands? I would think that would be more, I would think that would be a lot more open.
The, my recollection is the wetland areas are, are forested wetlands. And that it's, you know, we're not, we don't have any ponds per se on the property. They're just forested wetlands and so they are certainly vegetated with mature forest. So the, the distance from the property line to building five, which again is, is ultimately the building that would be built in phase two, if you will, is 148 feet. And, but I believe when we grade the, you know, there's a, basically a 20 to 25-foot grass platform that'll be around the back of the building and then a shallow swale, which I think consists of 30 to 40 feet, so it'd be close to 100-foot buffer that would remain.
Okay. That's all, that's all for me.
I'm not sure it's an appropriate time, but I wanted to talk about your comment about the, the four buildings versus the five buildings. And.
You're, you're.
I'm sorry. Having some, somewhat familiarity with construction, I would think from your point of view, it would be advantageous to do all five at the same time, just from an economy of scale. From our point of view, we're concerned with, obviously, the residential is the most advantageous right now for you to build because you can fill it immediately and you're not sure about the, the commercial. And I, I think it will come, but we don't have any guarantee of that. And so from our point of view, if this is going to be a mixed-use property, I think we were thinking of restricting the amount of residential space to encourage you to develop the commercial at the same time. I can understand our logic, I can understand your logic, and I'm wondering if you have any comments regarding that.
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm happy you brought that up. Since our approval, which allowed the building of four buildings with something commercial to be done prior to construction of the fifth. prior to construction of the fifth, our leasing agents have been talking to numerous people. And the feedback in general is that while, while they know there's a good development on Hilton Drive, they've seen the overall plan and they're hesitating to either lease land or buy a chunk of land or have us build something for them until they're sure that the apartments are up. Now, the flip side of that is that Mr. Flatley is hesitant to build just four and then have to come in in the future while those are up and occupied to build a fifth. So that's one, that's one sticking point. So one thing we were able to do, and I notice may not completely satisfy the board, but I want to just show that an effort's being made to do something commercially on the site, is we were in touch, we've gotten in touch with the Homestead Restaurant. And the owner is actually sitting here behind me, Mike McDonough. And they're having a bit of a parking issue. Right now, they are actually renting or leasing property from the church across the street for parking. It's working out for them, but you're crossing DW Highway to get there. It's probably not the safest thing in the world. So what we were able to do over the last few months is lay out additional parking, which will actually partially be on our site for the Homestead Restaurant. And that will get him out of whatever he has to do with the church across the street. It'll obviously be a safer situation for people going to the restaurant. We're hoping that the people that live here are going to be drawn to the Homestead and give them even more business. Maybe there's some more room for parking if necessary, I don't know. But I think that's the beauty of this location of the apartments also, is it's a walkable distance, you know, which is nice. But we do have a, a, an agreement signed. But Mr. Flatley is basing it on being able to build the fifth building in exchange for giving the Homestead extra parking. So it's both an, it's obviously, one is an economic decision. I can tell you the, the price of construction between two years ago and now is, is mind-boggling. We're, we're doing a project in Quincy, Mass. And we're finally about ready to get through the plan on board. In about two, three months, we should be, have our approvals, kind of getting off course a little bit. But the initial estimates we had on construction three years ago compared to now is, is, that blew my mind. It's, you know, 15, 20% higher. It's crazy. So he doesn't want to fall into that issue of holding off on, on building, for one. He doesn't want to disturb the residents that are there if there are four buildings up. You know, that, trucks would, would have to be coming in through, obviously, the main road. So you're, you're really, the last building on the, I guess, the southwest side of the plan, I'm sorry, the southeast side of the plan, may not be as affected, but the first three would. And, you know, if you've been fortunate enough to see the Nashville site, he takes good, great pride in doing a good job and getting it landscaped and making it look really nice and turn it over to the residents. And that's the plan here also. But we, I can tell you, and this has been going on from the time we started the CUP process, is we have been in touch with potential occupants for the remainder of the site. They see the overall plan and some of them, some of them are retail, some of them are industrial. There was one office, one that, I'm not sure if that's even still on the table at this point. But the first question out of the mouse is, when are these apartments going up? Naturally, the question is answered with, as soon as we can get them up. Why do you ask? You know? And they're just, I think they'd be happier knowing, or more likely to sign a lease or buy a piece of the property and build if they knew the apartments were going up. And if we flip that back to Mr. Flatley hesitant to build four as opposed to five due to, you know, economics being one and just site disturbance overall of having to come back in after everything is up and having to come, you know, come in and, and really, once everything's finished, graded out and cleaned up and the stormwater treatment systems are going, you know, everybody, I think, would like the site as stabilized as possible, as soon as possible. So, you know, that's where we stand now. And I mean, I'm sure Mr. McDonough, sitting in the audience, would be happy to, to speak on it at the appropriate time. That's, that's where we're standing at this point, is we're kind of at a crossroads. We've got people that are interested, they're also waiting for the apartments to go up. And we have Mr. Flatley happy to put the apartments up, but he'd like to do all five so there's a lack of site disturbance and economically it'd be more feasible.
Lynn, you asked a question, so please.
I'm, I'm pleased with what I hear. I think our concern was, was having the mixed use all there at the same time. I think incorporating the Homestead into this plan. First of all, I go to the Homestead and I will tell you their parking is a challenge down there. I've never had to park across the street, but it is a challenge. So I think having additional parking where you don't have to cross DW Highway for the Homestead kind of incorporates that use into your property. I frankly don't like the four-in-one issue with building. Because I think if you're going to go in there and build them, I think you go in and build them. And to do four and then to do a fifth one at some later date really is a disturbance to the, to the residents and is a, is a safety issue to anybody that's living there, I think. So I think this is a, a, a nice out for us that gives us the ability to approve this as a mixed use because you've incorporated them in with that and to, to deal with the safety concerns of having that fifth building built at a different time. So I'm really pleased with your sort of compromise solution here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, the CUP does, didn't, doesn't, wasn't written that way and, or isn't, wasn't conditional that way. I think we'd have, that was something we'd have to take to scat, to staff and have their opinion on the, the viability of doing that, whether it would in fact satisfy what we're trying to do. But I, I can see what you're saying and I can see there is a, some scope for, for discussion on that matter, if we may put, leave it like that. I mean, obviously, if the gentleman from the common man wants to talk, I, we'd give him the opportunity in a minute.
From who?
Sorry, oh, sorry, the Homestead. Sorry, sorry, oh, sorry, oh, save difference.
Oh, pain, pain.
The other things that I know, Desiree, do you want to offer anything?
No.
George?
The only things I was worried about, and given that Mike touched on most of my points, is I obviously would like to see what the building elevations look like, as well as the landscape and the lighting. Those are the things that I picked up. Apart from the interesting typos, like as you look at your cover page, you refer to EverSource and the rest of the documents refer to the public service in New Hampshire. You know, I can find a few, there's a load of typos, but, but those are, those are, that's an acceptable sort of variation. But otherwise, I, I've heard, like a lot of what you've heard and obviously I'm interested in one of your answers that you've given to Mike, because those tended to be the questions I had from going through it. It's the, it's the missing sheets I'm, I'm sort of, I'd like to see. But Desiree, you, have you got anything?
Yeah, you took some of my thunder though, so I was going to ask for exterior elevations. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see some typical floor plan layouts for that, just, for our knowledge of what's going in there and the amenities that you plan on putting in there so you can see what the full site build-out's going to be like. I know if I went to Nashville, I can get an idea. It's a similar kind of thing. But, you know, for the sake of our application, it'd be nice to see that stuff. If you're gonna, if you do end up phasing the buildings, my question is, are you going to phase the garages as well? Because you're building a garage with each build, that you're going to build all, all five garage buildings?
Exactly, yeah. We'd like to get the entire site stabilized and, and presentable.
I would like to propose an, an alternate, if, if indeed, that maybe we don't find that, we've been kind of working with the Homestead with the parking agreement and, and that doesn't really satisfy the intent for the mixed-use development. And you do need to do four buildings instead of five. If you do the one up kind of by the clubhouse, the construction's up closer to the main roadside away from the other residents. So it's, it's just one suggestion that I had, was if you put it up on that front side, the construction worker and the traffic can kind of be out on that parking lot, which would of course affect the parking for the Homestead, because I assume that's where the parking would be aimed for. And then along the lines of that question with the Homestead, are you, are you going to have a, a walkway connecting back into their property? Or do you have to go out to the road and along the frontage?
Actually have an exhibit plan that shows roughly what the parking would look like for the Homestead. It doesn't, it doesn't actually extend far enough into the site to impact any of the improvements that we're proposing, but it's obviously the, the, there is a need for area that we have. I mean, we would have to reconfigure like the rain garden or the stormwater management area that, you know, that's adjacent to that site. And certainly it would be easy to have a connectivity element from a pedestrian standpoint as the trail is, is, is real close to that location as well.
Well, it's not only pedestrian, I mean, are you, I mean, and probably we're talking without seeing anything, but I mean, I, is the suggestion that parking to the Homestead goes through their existing entrance or it's going to come in through your road and that?
Through their existing entrance.
You would use their entrance and just continue, okay. It's obviously something we'd need to see. If you want us to override what we originally said in the CUP, I think we'd obviously need to some, some, a document showing it, what you're proposing.
Sure. And I think, and that, that certainly is reasonable. I think it would be nice, there's a certain amount of, of work that we would have to put forward to, to probably demonstrate with some level of confidence that it can be done and meet all the regulations and, and so on. But it would be nice to know if, if the board members would consider that as an alternative, whether it's a, just a poll and certainly not a formal vote, but just something that, so that Mr. Walker and Mr. Flatley can, can determine whether that's something they want to pursue.
Well, I don't mind asking each member of the board for it not being a vote, but as a sort of comment to get a feel, to give you a feel. Let's just go around. Nelson?
Yes, could I ask other questions at the same time?
Please do.
Please do.
First of all, I would like to say, I would entertain this idea. I think there's some merit here and I think we should look at it. And I'd like to see some concepts of how you'd work it in. I'm especially interested in having pedestrian access from this, from this housing to that restaurant. And, and certainly that would be, it's a little tricky there with the rain garden and all that, so you, you've got to work out those details. But I'd be willing to explore it and I think it, it has a lot of merit, possible merit. There's two other questions I have, just while I've got the floor.
Yeah, go on.
One of them is that you, you talked about a loop road here and I'm not sure I see the loop. Could you just point it with your pointer where, what the loop is?
Right, so obviously we do come in for a length, which is not, does not loop. But ultimately, from here, you can loop right here or you could also loop all the way down accordingly, like this. And that's the, in review, in reviewing with the fire department, the request was, you know, one of the concepts that was presented to them early on, I believe, did not have that, what we call a loop. And maybe I'm not, haven't, maybe I didn't explain it real well. It doesn't loop all the way back out to DW Highway, but certainly.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the one other question is, this is on one corner of a large piece of property. Is there any subdivision being thought of or proposed here? And will these, will these be condominiums or these are rentals? Or could you just explain that a little?
Sure. The, there is no subdivision being proposed at this time. As part of the CUP process and, and part of our ongoing dialogue with the, the staff throughout the process, the subdivision is not a requirement. And it's, it's, it's simply not something that Mr. Flatley is interested in doing. He doesn't, I've yet to be involved in the project that he ever sells. But I do believe that it would be rent, these would be rental, as I understand, that's how his other properties are.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. The plan is, is to do rental. I mean, the units, the units are, they're absolutely beautiful units. So the plan is, is to rent them out. And I believe the subdivision of the property, and I'm just basing this on what's gone on in the past south of here, is I think any subdivision of the land is really going to be based on like an economic type deal. If, if something's getting developed, they may want to break this off so it's insured separately or, or something along those lines.
Okay, but right now, no subdivision?
Right now, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, would you just like to voice your opinion on the four to five?
Yep, I agree with Nelson that I think this, the idea has good merit, so I'd be open to discussing it that way.
Jeff?
Yeah, same here.
We know your view, Lynn, you've already.
Really?
Yeah. Desiree?
I like the idea, although I do kind of have a little bit of feeling against, you're, you're working with your neighbors to do something good with it, but it's not officially two uses on the property. It's just allowing access for the parking, so that, that kind of does weigh inside me a little bit, to that effect. But overall, I, I like the idea. It's definitely the spirit that we're looking for, so that's my thought.
And I think I could echo that. I, I think it's, with respect, I think I would be happier to trust Mr. Flatley than some other developers and I'll leave my comment, Mike.
Appreciate that.
Okay, now, as far as, oh, sorry, Desiree.
I never get to finish my questions. I got hijacked. All right. Sorry, I lost my train of thought here. So when we were talking about the CUP process and we were talking about kind of tying the site together so that it kind of has a similar feel all the way through, I was wondering what, or I'd like to see, I guess, as a recommendation. You haven't had any exterior elevations here or any kind of materials, but if you guys had thought a little bit more too, like a, a theme or a motif that you're going to work through the site to kind of tie it all back to, yeah.
The, I thought we did share architectural plans of these units during the CUP process, but I did bring an architectural elevation view of, of the building. The colors do change and maybe Kevin can maybe.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the colors may be a bit different.
Oh.
I think we saw, yes, four stars. We did see.
Desiree, they're not, they're not.
Yeah, but we did see.
The, we, we did speak with staff earlier today and, and they did let us know that we have to resubmit a more complete package. Obviously, there are additional elevations. This plot really doesn't do the buildings a whole lot of justice. I think some of the photos that we represented, you know, during the CUP process may be of more benefit, so we'll, we'll come prepared at the next meeting with, with those. You know, there has been changes in the color scheme internally, but the, I think what really ties the, in my opinion anyways, what ties the, you know, development together in, in a lot of these sites is the, how the landscaping plays in with the building orientation, the green space around the buildings. Every, every building feels like its, its own site on a lot of these, these plans that we've, we've done with Mr. Flatley and, and that they do have kind of a, I don't want to say a recreational of it, but certainly usable land around the buildings. And you don't find that in, in a lot of multifamily developments where they, you know, try to maybe over utilize a, a smaller footprint.
I definitely like the outdoor, outdoor use items that you have and there are a lot of recreational things in there. I would encourage though, some more materials or colors kind of throughout the, the development as you go through there. If you find something that works with it, kind of bring it through the next one and kind of just, just a little bit. I understand if you're doing some kind of brand, you know, if the box store ends up coming around, how, how could you incorporate that look down? But I, I would encourage that they could somehow tie together with, with materials at a minimum along the.
The buildings themselves, right.
What's that?
You're talking about the buildings themselves?
Yes, yes. All this is in discussion to the buildings, the landscaping, I agree. If it's, if you're going to keep with that same lush landscaping that, you know, he, he does around his apartments and you keep doing that for the rest of the buildings, then that'll certainly. and you keep doing that for the rest of the buildings, then that'll certainly tie it together. But I would like to see it with the architecture as well. And then just a question to the culvert that you were gonna connect the, the wetlands to the, like for overflow, the one part of the wetlands where you're looking at the impact. Is it gonna be like a, we've had a few other developers come through and they were talking about like kind of wide culverts that, that the critters can go in or is it, like what, what kind of culvert are you considering for?
Typically when we do wide culverts for critters or box culverts or embed culverts, it's actually in a wetland crossing application. It's not in an application where we're providing for continuity to, you know, watershed and, and, cause ultimately if we did not allow the existing drainage to overflow in that area, we would be altering the, the watershed and we'd have to address that in some fashion to make sure we're not creating an isolated pocket that's gonna impound water and, and, you know, create a problem somewhere else. So we are not contemplating a critter crossing of any kind. It, I mean frankly, it's too long of a length to really have any success in accommodating that because we are traversing the site for the most part and daylighting that on the other side of, of the building. But it's certainly something that we would contemplate if it was in a wetland impact. I don't believe that that will be required on any, you know, through any of our state permit reviews, but that's normally where we get some pushback. And we have been working quite closely with Fish and Game on wetland crossings of late, so we're very familiar with what they would, what they would like to see.
Okay. I think that is, oh, and final question, I'll just ask this one. The overhead utilities that are running along the street side, are you guys gonna be putting those underground? The process, like if you keep coming along the, sorry, west side, east side, the side of the property you guys are on? The east side? Sorry, long day. The overhead, like all the power poles that are on there?
The street are in the back of the property.
All on the street side?
Along DW Highway?
Yeah, I was asking if those are gonna stay up.
Yeah, those would, those would likely stay up.
And everything within would be underground?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The streets are privately owned?
This would be privately owned, yeah.
Well, I think we've, we've, we've tacked you pretty hard and I hope you've taken something from what we've said to you. The, the sort of only remaining issue, which is really if you probably saw the August 28th memo from Jillian, is for us to decide whether we have enough information to accept this or whether we would defer acceptance until we get the rest of the information which you've promised us today. I don't know what your views are. Maybe we should give you the chance to say, are you really seeking acceptance? Or do you recognize that there are sufficient gaps that we should really defer acceptance to another meeting? And I will obviously, it'll be up to my colleagues to make the motion and decide, but I think it would be a good idea if we got a feel from you, what you are trying to get at. You've, you've been very good answering a whole range of questions. I think it'd be interesting for us to hear from you whether you think you've reached the stage that we should accept this project or simply say, thank you for everything you've done and we'll continue this to a further date.
Well.
It's known as putting you on, it's known as putting you on the, on the hook for that one.
Would've been easier if you asked me this question without my client sitting beside me, but.
Well, I'm quite happy for Kevin to answer instead. Kevin?
No, the, I mean, obviously we came here tonight with an understanding that, that, you know, we had informally submitted the landscaping and lighting plans. Those are a checklist requirement. So technically we're not requesting a waiver from that and thereby the application is not complete. So if the board felt compelled to accept the application this evening, based on all of the nice testimony that we gave you, that would be phenomenal. But we certainly understand if you would decide to continue that to the.
Well, in that case, I'll leave it to my colleagues to, to make a motion and we'll vote accordingly. Mr. Disco, come on, you're, you're usually good on these matters.
I would move we not accept it at this time because it is incomplete.
Yeah.
That would be a motion.
A motion has been made to defer acceptance to a further, to another meeting. Do I have a second? Michael, Mike, thank you for seconding it. I'll put.
Do we have a date?
The next available meeting would be what, Mr. Trilling?
Fifteenth of September, failing, failing that.
October 6th.
Sorry, October the 6th.
We, we would certainly like to be on that schedule.
Okay, so does that change, accept that amendment to the motion?
To October the 6th? Yes, I would accept.
You've got the 15th.
I've got the impression that, that the missing pieces have been submitted, but just were not in time to be included in this, for this meeting, didn't, didn't make the deadline. Is that correct?
Chad, are you, are you saying you would prefer to wait till the 6th?
Well, let me, I guess I'd like to phrase it this way. We would certainly like to have the discussion pertaining to the homestead parking potential sooner than later because ultimately that will become part of our plan set and will likely go through a review as well with CLD. We are prepared to submit revised plans to address CLD's comments and any, all of the outstanding items probably within three or four days. So we could, we could reasonably be on for the 15th for an acceptance maybe and hopefully to have a informative dialogue about the homestead potential.
Any comments on that from my colleagues?
I agree with that. I was just gonna say a side note before we take a vote, maybe we should do public testimony?
I know, we do decide what we're gonna do, acceptance first, then we'll do public testimony.
All righty.
Was the 15th not available because of the schedule?
I guess it was just my assumption that more time would be needed, but if we'll be ready by the 15th, then.
Great.
Mr. Disco, Mr. Reading, are you happy with the 15th?
Yeah, I'm happy with the 15th.
Okay, so the motion before the board is that we will continue this matter till September the 15th at seven thirty, at seven o'clock in this room. Do I have a, could I take a vote on that? Those in favor? Else, you've got a full vote and we will continue the matter to that date, date certain, seven o'clock with no further notice or butters. Out of courtesy to the public members, I would like to throw the motion, the door, the roof, floor open to anybody who wants to address the board on this matter. Come on, sir, after I've insulted you enough, you must, you've got a chance to throw back at me.
All right, not the first time that's happened. I'm not really, my name's Mike McDonough from the homestead, by the way. I was just here more to answer any questions that you might've had about the layout and the reasons for the parking increase.
I think any of us who've eaten in your restaurant would be more than happy to understand the reason behind your thinking.
And, you know, we're excited to have the opportunity. Kevin actually held a public forum for the people that live in the neighborhood at the restaurant. And at that meeting, I took the opportunity to pull him aside and say, hey, any chance that we might be able to work something out? He said, yeah, just sit tight and we'll see how we make out first and that's basically how it's gone about. But it's, it's a great opportunity for us and we're excited about not only having the extra parking, but having.
Two hundred and fifty other potential eaters, yeah.
At our back door, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for that. Is anybody else? You've got a sign in there. Is anybody else wishing to speak to the board? I see no further other people coming forward. We will close the public hearing. Is there anything else the members of the board wish to say? Or shall we consider this matter deferred until 15th of September? No further comment? Thank you very much for your very enlightening testimony. We do appreciate and look forward to seeing you on the 15th of September. And at that point, I'll be happy to hand the gavel back to my learned colleague.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You strictly have to make a decision because now that Lynn is here, either Jeff or Bob, Nelson can no longer vote.
So I think we even it up if we have Jeff be our voting member for the rest of the meeting. I think that'll even up the opportunities between the two of you over the course of the year. Item four on our agenda, nice job, by the way. Did a great job. Robert Lavoy is the applicant and Greg Kennedy is the owner. Review for acceptance in consideration of final approval of an application for a two-lot minor subdivision. The parcel's located at eight Fuller Mill Road in the R1 residential district, tax map 4B, Lot 153. This agenda item is continued from the June 16th and July 7th and August 4th, 2015 planning board meeting. The applicant is requesting a continuance to the October 6th, 2015 planning board meeting to submit revised plans that reflect variances received at the August 26th, 2015 ZVA meeting. What is the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept the request of the applicant and we continue this matter till October the 6th of, October the 6th at seven o'clock in this room with no further notice or butters.
Second by Ms. Christiansen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero for the motion to continue. Item five on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anybody have any discussion items for today? Nelson?
I just had one thing I wanted to bring up. I will forward this information to the board, but the Regional Planning Commission, Nashua Regional Planning Commission, the Technical Advisory Committee has recommended acceptance of the revised bike pedestrian plan for the Nashua regional, region, regional bike plan, if you will. And basically it's different than previous plans in that it sort of lays it more on the individual towns to decide where they wanna have their bicycle things and everything. But anyway, they're looking for support going forward. They're looking for people interested in this and working on it and volunteering to, to continue working with the implementation of this plan now in the region. I'm sorry, Mr. Mahon isn't here because I wanted to get his thoughts on it, but I, I will forward this on to the board for your consideration and to think about if it's something, if it's something, I personally would of course like to support this. I've been supporting the, the group as a, in the planning process. However, we're in a town here that really has not shown a lot of interest in supporting the sidewalk building or sidewalk development. And so I was, I just wanna inform the board of this. Maybe we have some discussions with the council or some members of the council, our member of the council, Mr. Mahon, to see if we wanna support this activity going forward. So I'm sort of looking for a little guidance and advice and I will forward this. It just came in late this afternoon.
Great, thank you. So that's an opportunity for basically members of the board on their own to volunteer, not volunteer, but to go and learn and enjoy a little bit. I think it's always great to have an opportunity to participate, learn, know more and it helps us to better advocate for our position. I would offer one comment on your statement about supporting the town for sidewalks. I think that there are members of the community, citizens, who are interested in some sidewalks and express that same.
Absolutely, I know that, yeah.
So the, the limitations, I guess, are, you know, the different decision makers that have been elected to office for, their interest in whether they wanna spend public funds that way and vote that way. But that can always change.
Okay.
I want to add to that though, almost on a similar note. I asked Tim a few days ago to forward an email that I had gotten from the Department of Transportation, Department of Environmental Services, a couple of other state departments on a Bike Walk Alliance of New Hampshire, a Bike Pedestrian Transportation Committee is having a September 30th from 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. a Bike Walk Conference in Concord and it's free education is how it is promoted. So everybody should've gotten that email. I wanted to just remind everybody of it so that anybody who's interested could go, but also because it's an email distributed to the board, it belongs on our record and in our file. And I would add that to your comment about biking pedestrians.
Thank you.
Other comments or items of concern?
The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if anybody, I attended the meeting this, seven days ago on the potential presentation from the DHSS and the nominated developer of the marijuana clinic. I can only commend to people to, if they didn't attend, and I know they didn't because I did. If you watch the, it's quite an interesting hour of local television, public television, our, our station television system. If you wanna listen to the presentation, it was very interesting. I would draw your attention to the fact that, the interesting fact is that one gentleman who's a citizen made the point that marijuana is better to him than the opium, which his doctors are currently prescribing, which I thought was very interesting. But above all, the fact is that by and large, this town is probably the one that's been most welcoming. Most of the other meetings, which I've seen on WMUR and other TV stations, have not been as friendly as we appear to be towards people and this project.
But Merrimack is known for being respectful.
I know.
It is.
But it wasn't just respectful. It was actually more, it was more friendly. And I would particularly commend the chief of police who did a fantastic presentation.
Thank you for commenting on that. Any other items of concern or discussion? Seeing none, it brings us to item six on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of August 18th, 2015. What's the rule of the board?
I move we approve them as printed.
Motion to approve as printed. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Milnes. Any other discussion? Desiree?
I have a couple of comments to it.
Sure.
Page four, item number one, the second part of the sentence in the second part, it says, there is no bump out at the rear. It's actually at the rear on the lower level. There's actually a bump out on the upper floor. So I just wanted to add, on the, on the lower level, no bump out in the rear on the lower level. That's my comment. And then page four again, item, or line 22, it's Madi Cherry, not Maide. So M-A-D-I, last name, or first name, sorry. And then I, I wanted to put one other thing that I think's important to get in the meeting minutes on this one. And then maybe underneath item 20, or line 26 on page four. It was asked during the meeting if Jillian, as the, your role, the zoning, the zoning, yeah, zoning administrator, how, how repairs to the roof on the patio would be viewed if they would require a variance. And, and you stated that they were not required, that where a variance wouldn't be required for basic repairs to the roof and the patio, assuming it didn't change its use or anything. So just basic repair. Those are my comments. That's it.
Thank you, Desiree. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to approve those minutes. That brings us to item seven, which is to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Chairman, make a motion that we adjourn.
Second by Desiree. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? We adjourn. Don't forget to take your microphones off and thank you very much.